It is now seven oh nine P M. Council City Council Meeting is called to order. Please join in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If you'll be seated, please. For the record, we're starting a little late to call that technical, difficult. All right. So roll call, please, Mr. Crum.
Mr. Robb, here. Mr. Roberts, here. Mr. Gates, here. Mr. Martin, here. Mr. McGlocklin, here.
I am now entertaining a motion to dispense with the reading of the Journal from April the nineteenth, two thousand twenty-one.
So move to second.
We have a motion by Mr. Roberts and a second by Mr. Crum to dispense with the reading of the Journal from April nineteenth, two thousand twenty-one. Discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Roberts.
Yeah.
Mr. Gates.
Here.
Mr. Martin.
Yeah.
Mr. McGlocklin.
Yeah.
Mr. Robb.
Here.
And motion passes. Now comes the time for public comment. I don't know if any council members have received any public comment via mail or otherwise to be shared this evening or, you know, from City Hall. We did not receive any, so I know Mr. Crum correct, okay. Any public comment? Mr. Will state your name and address and your business.
My name's Dan Reese. I live at twenty-eight Sixth Street. The reason I'm here tonight is my councilman Garland's going to introduce a change in an ordinance that's currently on the books in Shelby. And this came about because of a mess that I have across the street in some apartment buildings. And I got to look and then there was an ordinance, the way I understand it, the trash, rolling trash carts or your bags of trash can only be put out at the edge of the street on the day that it's going to be picked up. There's a twenty-four hour window. Well, nothing says what has to be done with those carts after the fact. And the problem we got right now is they're dragging these carts back up twenty yards from the street and leaving them set in front of the apartment building, filling up their trash, lids open and the trash blows all over. And I do know that Garland had shared a picture that I took with you guys here a couple of weeks ago. That's just part of the problem. So in talking to him, I said, is there anything we can do about it? And he's agreed to see if the ordinance can be amended where the trash barrels are to be taken round back or somewhere out of sight from in front of the houses. The only other thing I want to say about that is if, even if it's voted on to change that, if we don't enforce it, then none of it makes any difference. The front of these apartments are an absolute mess up there. There's busted up junk railroad ties, there's tires, there's cans, there's bottles. The shrubs are out of control, the grass is out of control. And I understand there's already laws on the books that pertain to that. So again, I'd like to see where these barrels and these trash carts should be taken out of sight. But if we don't force it, then none of that's going to really matter. So that's what this is all about. And I came tonight personally to ask you guys to really consider this at some point between now and the final reading. Take a drive up Sixth Street, take a look at this mess and see, see if you don't agree with me. I know that's not the only place in town. I see them other places too. But I happen to live across the street from this. I keep my yard low and I keep my house up and I gotta look at this mess day in and day out. It's really getting old, so if something could be done, I would appreciate it.
Okay. All right. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Reese.
For the public time. All right.
Mr. Bell.
Um.
State your name and address and your.
Uh, Jack Lamar Melton. I go by Lamar. Um, and that is.
Please.
Twenty-eight West Main Street. Uh, no, no, I moved thirty-five and a half West Main Street, sorry. And I work for Rumkey, as you all know, and I know exactly what he is talking about. Um, and it is an issue that I deal with on a daily basis. And I've been talking to my bosses and that, that is a big problem because people will put their trash out. It blows all over, the wind blows trash all over and it looks terrible. It looks terrible. And I would suggest that you give him his due. It's all right to say.
Thank you, Commissioner Melton. All right. For the public comment. All right. Now we'll move forward then to reports from standing special committees. Community and downtown development committee, councilman McCall.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, community and development committee, we met this this afternoon at thirty-third. Um, we just met briefly. Um, there wasn't a whole lot on the table, so I don't have a briefing. One thing I do want to mention to you though is Jessica Griffin, um, our economic development liaison. She showed us like a one-minute video of some drone footage they're, they're taking and using for some of our businesses, such as the Dunlop Tire out there at Debo. And it's very impressive. So in the next month or two, she's going to come to the council and give her, give us her quarterly briefing. And I suggested that video be a part of the showcase of the, of the new drones capability here in Shelby. That's all, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. And, and I say what a tool to have in the toolbox. Uh, we're of course borrowing that drone and, you know, Richland Area Chamber made that available. When I first went to the U County Development Seminar back in the day, I don't think any of that was ever thought of, but these drone presentations, they really, you know, people see the building inside and out from a drone perspective. Looking from above, it is, it is impressive. So I've, I've been looking forward to seeing that presentation here. Any other comments or questions for Mr. McGlocklin in regard to his report? If not, thank you, Mr. McGlocklin. We'll look forward to public works and general operations committee, councilman Robb.
We met on the twenty-seventh. Um, a couple of items that were discussed, one was the color water property. Um, there's some ongoing needs and discussions amongst the community leaders as to how best market that property. Mr. Gates advised that some ongoing external property maintenance issues and also advise the need for member stand a memorandum of understanding between the entities involved in the downtown revitalization project. And you see on tonight's council agenda, um, that M O U, um, resolution on that. And Park, Parkland's looking for grants to resurface the tennis and basketball courts. And finally, um, begin to look at vehicle prices to replace the current tax. And that's all I have.
All right. Thank you, Councilman Robb. Are there any comments or questions for Mr. Robb in regard to his report? If not, we'll move forward then to reports of city officials, the mayor's report. I'll just give you a few highlights of some dates of this last couple of weeks. On April the twentieth, a sworn Brinson Delogue is a part-time firefighter. He, uh, looks to have a future as a full-time firefighter and we hope that's right here in Shelby. At least give that consideration. April the twenty-third, I stopped by the fire station to congratulate firefighter Mike Paulo upon his retirement. And I think everyone would agree, Mr. Paulo was a model firefighter and he will certainly be a big pair of boots to be filled. April the twenty-sixth, I enjoyed a ribbon cutting event on Mansfield Avenue celebrating the Shelby location of heritage, uh, Christian counseling center and ministries. It is nice to see both the Mansfield Avenue corridor and our downtown district welcoming new businesses over these past several years. On April the twenty-eighth, I traveled to Lexington for our monthly Richland County Mayor's meeting. And it's good to be able to get together as public servants to share ideas and problem-solving techniques. On April the twenty-eighth, I attended by phone a conference call with the advisory board of the District Five Area Agency on aging and certainly cannot say enough what area agency aging does across Richland County. On April the thirtieth, I joined the members of our Shelby City Shade Tree Commission on the new fire station property for our annual Arbor Day celebration and a reading of that proclamation. I believe, if I'm, if I think correctly, it's either the third or the fourth oak tree we planted. Probably you see them on this south side and I think in the years come to, you know, be a very staky site to see those oak trees there as they mature. I also wanted to mention that, uh, I know we have different empha- emphases on, uh, months, uh, but this is also, the month of May is Community Action Commission Month. Trying to bring awareness to what the Community Action Commission does in our communities. Uh, we are part of, of course, the Community Action Commission of Erie, Huron in Richland County. There's, there's history to that. I thought I would share at least the mission statement and, uh, and the promise of community action. Uh, the mission statement of Community Action Commission is to promote self-sufficiency and improve the quality of life of those in need. And then the promise, community action changes people's lives and embodies the spirit of hope, improves communities and makes America a better place to live. We care about the entire community and we are dedicated to helping people help themselves and each other. The Community Action Commission collaborates here in town with Shelby Healthline. I don't know if, if we have any action with Fish or not, but also I think our ladies at the utilities office uh, use those services almost on a daily basis of trying to find relief for those in need with utility bills. So I'm very happy to be on the, uh, the advisory board with the Community Action Commission doing great work near Richland County, Huron County and Erie County. All righty. Are there any other, I should say, are there any questions for me or comments in regard to my report? All right. If not, we'll look forward then to a report from our director of finance, Mr. Crum.
Thank you, sir. Um, pretty much normal operations, uh, from my department. Uh, the income tax collections, as a reminder, they're now due May seventeenth. Uh, folks must either file or extend their returns by that due date. We still have a lot to bring in, uh, so it's probably going to get busy in City Hall here, uh, in the next couple of weeks if those come in. The state auditor is continuing to be in and out, uh, working on the audit. So far, everything has gone smoothly with that. I've sat through several webinars on the ARPA funds that we'll be getting this summer. I've tried to keep you guys updated, the email on those. Right now, it's still a little early for a lot of these webinars. Most of them have said, we're still kind of waiting for the Treasury Department to issue guidance, which should come in the next couple of weeks. I think the next O B M, uh, presentation is May eighteenth. I sent an email to you late this afternoon with a link to that if anybody would like to view that. But I will certainly keep you posted of that as well as we, if we find out more about, not over the, I, we are up to date on the process of what we need to do, this is more what can we, can, and we cannot spend it on and the reporting and such as we get the funds and expend them. So those are sort of the, the big things going on right now. I guess, so that's really my report. I'll send away.
All right. Are there any, uh, comments or questions for Mr. Crum in regard to his report? Mr. Gates.
Mayor, I'm wondering if the legislation regarding the park levy has been filed with the county auditor?
It has, yes.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Thank you, Mr. Crum. Move forward then to Mr. Eisner, law director.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, nothing new to report on my end, as is usual. I would encourage council in this ordinance thirteen twenty-two-one to maybe do a little brainstorming on that. I'm certainly sympathetic to, uh, Mr. Reese and those involved for drafting this. Uh, it does become difficult, if not impossible, to enforce at times. When I first got this legislation, I had to go with the charter because A and, A one and two seem problematic to me. Uh, so for example, in A one, if you would come to my house and walk out my back door, I have a poured concrete pool, uh, that has a pergola and an area rug and furniture we sit on, uh, which arguably would be prohibited by A one of this statute. Uh, A two seems very broad in the sense that we're saying all the power of this, just as the mayor's designated, say, I don't like it, remove it, uh, which I don't know if that would be enforceable in a court of law. I would imagine in A three, I see the front yard, but there may be times when we want to ban it from side yards or backyards. It just becomes very problematic to create a uniform system here. So I would encourage you to maybe roundtable this, committee it, think about how we can better brainstorm ways to control this, yet at the same time, not excluding very valid reasons such as pools and furniture sitting by your pool in your backyard, which would be arguably prohibited, uh, being contiguous to a structure of the city. So just think about that. If you have any questions, open my doors open and explore further.
All right. Thank you. Are there any, uh, comments or questions for Mr. Eisner in regard to his report? Now, thank you, Mr. Eisner. Move forward to Mr. Gates, project coordinator.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, we finalized the paving, uh, bid documents and contracts, so we'll schedule a meeting with that contract. I don't think there are any here to get started anytime soon, but, uh, we opened up our bids for the roofing project at City Hall. Vodika Roofing out of Fremont was a little bit of one hundred and nine thousand, one hundred and ninety-seven dollars. Yesterday was one twenty-five, so that did come under. And I talked with the contractor in East Main Street, so I know we talked about that before, it would be starting soon. So it'll be head of downtown messed up a little bit, so that's all I have there.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Gates. Are there any comments from Mr. Gates or questions in regard to his report? Mr. Gates, do you know, is, are, are the asphalt plants in Ohio, are they opening up or have you heard anything?
I, you know, I have not yet.
Okay.
And they very well may be, but I just haven't heard anything yet.
I drew a blank on Mansfield. Didn't seem like there was any activity there. I was just curious how soon some of these contractors may be.
Sure, it won't be long.
Yeah, no, it won't be long. Thank you, sir. All righty. Well, we have all reports from our city officials. Uh, we have new business. We have a motion to request a liquor hearing for liquor permit establishments within the city of Shelby.
So move second.
We have a motion by Mr. Robb and a second by Mr. Gates to request a liquor hearing for liquor permits establishments within the city of Shelby. Discussion? Mr. Gates.
Mayor, I want to thank the police chief for his memo to councilings.
Yes, sir. I think you all have been on here long enough to know how to vote to, to attain the desired end. If there are, I know the problems as, as chief has reported. Any further discussion? Mr. McGlock.
Just a reminder, is what you're saying, there's no perceived problems, so we don't, like, I don't feel we need one, so I'm voting negative. Is that what you're going with this?
Yes.
Got it.
Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Roberts.
Yeah.
Mr. Gates.
Yeah.
Mr. Martin.
Nay.
Mr. McGlocklin.
Nay.
Mr. Robb.
Nay.
Motion to request a liquor, uh, hearing for liquor permit establishments within the city of Shelby fails. And we have a new business. You're in that, we move forward to unfinished business, future use of Main Street Fire Station. Um, I have, we have not heard anything. I did speak to chief and we have, so I'll give a little feedback here as of late, but we have not received any correspondence. So there's nothing new to report under this item. Exterior property maintenance, fifty-nine West Main Street. We informed everyone that the C I C has purchased this building, pretty well publicized. And, uh, the Roadbury Club went through the building today and observed things from the outside. And certainly a grand old building, but a lot of potential there, but a lot of work to do as well. Uh, they have, Mr. Gates is going to chime in there anywhere, uh, being an exterior maintenance expert, but, uh, pretty much advise it then to make sure you get the outside taken care of, uh, roof needs and, uh, brick and mortar and tuck pointing and so forth. Get the outside solidified in a good shape and then give you more time to work on the inside. Is that kind of the basic?
Correct. And they're very actively looking for contractors. First, they gotta get the, uh, that west side shored up. We'll have to redo the drain, have to redo that wall. That's probably more likely going to have to be redone instead of patched at this point. So they'll have to be shored up on, on the top there. So they're working hard on getting contractors lined up to get that done, so.
Yeah. I believe they've received a few quotes, lots of different, uh, bits and pieces of this. Um, and also, Mr. Crum, you mentioned as far as the interior, while that is going on, uh, you mentioned the Boy Scouts for the, how, how long, Mr. Crum?
Yeah. You will see a, uh, dumpster out there in the, the very near future. The Boy Scout troop here in town has, has agreed to come in and kind of remove all of the debris and this stuff left behind. So while, uh, while it isn't necessarily for the exterior maintenance, uh, you will see that, that dumpster come in and then leave probably in the same couple of days.
Could those Boy Scouts be stepping up there? Any other questions or comments on the building? Uh, they are, uh, we're going to have that for a public comment. We'll talk afterwards, okay? They are, I think, looking at color palettes, uh, to, to try to find something there that will, in the meantime, uh, be more appealing to the, to the ice hockey team as we go by. All righty. Charter, sentimental timeline. Do you have anything to report, Mr. Gates?
Nothing tonight, Mayor, but in two weeks or so.
All right. Very good. We're looking forward to it. McBride Park Baseball Field. Mr. Robb.
Okay. Uh, we will have an opportunity to take a look at the lease and, um, I went back through the table of special ordinances, especially the table six, which outlines, um, the leases that the city has and the ordinances and resolutions that were passed, um, in support of those leases. And, um, I see nothing, um, in that, in that table, um, for the year two thousand and ten in particular, no, no lease recorded or no ordinance or resolutions supporting the lease, um, between the Park Board and the Little League. So my question would be directed at the law director then, um, does the Park Board have the authority, um, to enter into a lease contract with, with Little League without the approval of council?
Uh, and kind of somewhat anticipate a little bit of this. I haven't fully researched it to the extent it needs for a formal legal opinion, but I would direct you to, um, section two seventy-eight of the city of Shelby Charter, which is pretty specific that the board of park commissioners shall have the entire management and control of all parks and parkways of the city that it now has or may hereafter require, uh, and goes on. And then designation of parks and parkways, the Bryant Field is included. So at a first glance, it would appear that the Park Board has total absolute control, uh, to manage the parks in the manner they see fit. Uh, but like I say, I haven't fully elaborated on that as far as a, a full legal opinion. I haven't been asked to provide that. If you're asking me, I will fully research it, but.
If I remember correctly, that, that ordinance is from nineteen fifty-nine?
What ordinance is that? The what, the two seventy-eight?
I'm sorry?
Section two seventy-eight of the charter? Of, of the ordinance of the city of Shelby?
Yeah.
Uh, let's see what's. I don't know the exact, what, the end, it always tells you the, the time that it was addressed. It looks like two thousand and ten, two thousand and sixteen, two thousand and seventeen.
I get it. Okay.
But certainly, uh, if council wishes to change the, uh, ordinance as it rates the management of the parks, it's within your discretion, but that's the ordinance on the books now.
Mr. Gates.
Very somewhat analogous situation. This was back in the nineteen eighties. The, uh, when the Shelby Conservation League went out of business, they deeded their property out on Rome South Road to the city, uh, nine miles from the city limits. It was north of where the Covered Bridge used to be, if that helps people to, to know where it was located. The, uh, the Park Board decided that that property was no longer needed. They wanted to get rid of it. And at that time, they came to council again for authorization to sell that land. Now, I'm, I'm sure the law director has correctly read what's on the books, but there is a case where the Park Board wanting to get rid of property that was under their control did get specific authorization from council to, to sell that property. So whether that makes things clear or muddies the water more, there you go.
Not much relevance to my analysis, but, but again, I have not fully researched the issue to give a full legal opinion, but the sale of city-owned property versus the management of city-owned property et cetera in the ordinance is a, is a, a different starting point to me.
Well, I think the, uh, Mr. Martin.
I don't know if it's going to make clear or not, but I, I would like, uh, full legal opinion on the, the left to right limits that the Park Board has today.
And I guess so we're clear, could we narrow what the legal question is you're asking me? Are you asking me whether the Park Board has the ability to lease property that they manage? Is that the question?
Without, without council authorization.
Without council authorization?
Yes.
All right.
Well, look forward. I'd be very clear, council so chose to pass the ordinance saying that the Park Board shall not lease or any contract related to real estate without council approval. Uh, maybe make that a section D. But in the meantime, I will research that issue, I will.
Thank you, sir. Move on to the, uh, Health Department and the State Budget. Mr. Gates.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, we had heard some good news that the language in the State Budget Bill, House Bill one-ten, uh, language that would have outright eliminated our health department when it's, uh, was taken out. Uh, it was, uh, premature to do the happy dance. I learned only after I had done the happy dance on this. Uh, there is language and that is, uh, still endangers our health department. There's an article that was included in packets. Um, some city health departments in Ohio may be forced to merge with counties. And I know, Mayor, you had shared the information that, that you had been in communication with our state representative and our state senator. They are doing their best, I have no doubt, to, uh, to stand up on behalf of our health department. It was suggested that, uh, we specifically weigh in on this matter. Uh, I had a conversation with the mayor on Friday and as a result, I had drafted a letter that, uh, finance, well, I emailed and then the, excuse me, the court of council made it available. Uh, you can see it's the one-page letter labeled draft. What, uh, what I'd like to do at this point is move the council meet as a committee of the whole uh, to discuss the matter of the Shelby City Health Department and the State Budget.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Gates and a second by Mr. Martin to meet as a committee of the whole uh, to discuss the Health Department and the State Budget. Discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Roberts?
Yeah.
Mr. Gates?
Yeah.
Mr. Martin?
Yeah.
Mr. McGlocklin?
Yeah.
Mr. Robb?
Yeah.
And motion passes being of committee of the whole, seven twenty-nine. Mr. McGlocklin.
Actually, Mayor, it's seven thirty-nine.
Oh, seven thirty-nine. No, no. Thank you, sir.
Okay. Uh, discussion. Mr. Gates.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Wanting to put together something that was appropriate but not too long, and as I shared with the mayor, after I got over my anger, I was able to come up with this. Again, you know, thanking them for their efforts. You know, the second paragraph, of course, is the however, here's what I want to dwell on. However, the language in the proposed Ohio Revised Code, Section 3709.012, is an all-new language, is an all-new subset. As the Ohio State considers the State Budget Bill is equally troubling, this section again targets the Shelby City Health District and the other mid-sized city health districts by requiring, quote, "a study examining the efficiency and effectiveness of merging with the general health district of the county in which the city is located." Quite frankly, we are concerned that the criteria for such a study, by the way, the criteria is determined by the state auditor and the state health director. We're concerned that the criteria for such a study will lead to a foregone conclusion. Why is it that only city health districts must conduct this study? Is it assumed that general health districts, by the sole virtue of their populations, are efficient and effective? The arbitrary fifty thousand, fifty thousand population figure is without justification. Let us point out that Laurel County has thirty-five, no, thirty-five thousand, three hundred and twenty-eight people and Holmes County has forty-three thousand, nine hundred and one people, based on 2019 estimates, yet their health department's going to pass from this whole process. I'd love to hear the justification for that. One should not assume that the Shelby City Health District is opposed to accountability. No, just the opposite is true. It is completed the complicated, time-consuming and expensive process of accreditation through the public health accreditation board, which has conducted its site visit in March. We expect to receive our accreditation on, just got this date, on May fourteenth, I believe it was, Mayor.
Yes, sir.
On May fourteenth, 2021. Then the closing paragraph. It's the two, it's paragraphs two and three that are the substantive. So, you know, I have no particular pride in authorship here, but, you know, any suggestions to, you know, to make our point, of course, you know, Mrs. John and Mr. Omenchuk, it's kind of preaching to the choir. They then, of course, will share this information with whomever else appropriate, so. And then, you know, signatures, we need to decide who's going to do the signatures. Is this letter from council? Is this letter from, you know, others? I'm going to assume that the Health Commissioner and the Director of Public Safety are doing their own work here. They're welcome to sign this, so.
If it would please council, I would think that if this came from our legislative body, who we most affected, we're meeting tomorrow night as a Board of Health, and I think we'll kind of draw up our own and then as the Board of Health, I will sign that with Dr. Chow, our medical director, and probably all of us, Beth and Tiffany, so we could have this coming from a legislative body and then a letter, probably with a few more of the facts and figures that are kind of pandered about how much, how many hours we put into this process, how much money we put into this process, how we responded to the pandemic, what our response times are and so forth. We can fill those in from the Health Department side, but this sounds great to me coming from the legislative body. That's just my take on it.
Mr. Martin?
First of all, thank you, Councilman Gates, for putting this together as the initial draft. I do agree, I think we all should sign it if we feel, feel the need to. I'm not going to speak for any other councilman, whether they want to sign it or not. This is very, very troubling because this almost, it almost does feel like an attempt to get the intended outcome without having to deal with the political blowback of getting the intended outcome under the guise of efficiency and effectiveness. Frankly, the accountability for efficiency and effectiveness belongs with our constituents in the city. No bureaucrats or elected officials down in the boroughs. If our citizens felt that it was not efficient and effective to have our own health department, then various levies would not pass. Political support would erode and we would be forced to consolidate in due time. But we've seen the exact opposite and I don't, I don't know that we have, I would, I would almost like to see that outlined a little bit clearer in this as far as that argumentation of it's not just a matter of people. Even if they came up with a perfect process for determining efficiency and effectiveness, it will be imperfect because of who's coming up with it. Our system is set up, home rule is set up, so that our constituents hold the purses of accountability, nobody else. And I, we've seen this happen so many times before. This is why there's centralization of 911 services that are wonderful unless you're out in the boon docks and you need 911. And they're starting to consolidate different city governments and other things within Ohio as well, districts and sub-districts. It's just, in the name of efficiency and effectiveness, it's anything but. It's just delayed accountability. So I would like to see that fleshed out a little bit more. And then I only have one administrative note. Where we first say city health district, we need to put in parentheses, C-H-D, so that words used there, but that, those are my only notes. I would like to see it a little, little more forcefully spelled out, though, what a danger this is fundamentally to accountability, because it won't just be the Health Department. I mean, you know, we have county commissioners, I'm sure they could do our job for us, right? Why not just consolidate all governance at the county level? And you smirk, but there's, there's actually, I've actually had debates with state senators over just that issue of them talking about absorbing townships and everything into county, county governance. That's something that periodically comes up down at the state level. They're always looking at these ways to, quote unquote, "make government more efficient" and government more effective. That's a wrong, but that is the, that is the epitome of the wrong question. We shouldn't be asking if our government is more effective and efficient. We should be asking if our government is more accountable, because in that accountability, effectiveness and efficiency will follow. Because people are smart enough to understand when it's not effective or efficient. But if we're just focused on that one thing and not the accountability, then it ruins the whole time.
Mr. Gates?
Oh, I'm sorry, Steve?
Mr. Gates?
I've made some notes here, that our constituents are best qualified to determine our effectiveness and efficiency, and also another note that in trend toward bigger accountability is lost. So I can certainly touch on those two very good points that Nathan's made.
And I'd like to add, as well, with Nathan, you know, the signature, individual signatures, I'd support that as well versus just the city council.
Yeah, well, yeah, that's what I would do is.
Okay.
Yeah.
Mr. Rock?
As the General and Safety Committee, we've had, you know, I've watched them work toward credit, accreditation, and, you know, so they're really passionate about that and our Health Department does very good about it and I think that they're accountable as they are, so I would be happy to sign it or something, if it gets them off Columbus to help change their minds.
I will, I will work on this tonight after council. I will send it to Stacy, Mayor, I'll see see to you, and to Brian. You know, she can format it, stick it on the letterhead, and then, you know, the council members, we can get in tomorrow to sign that, because this, the State Budget Bill is moving, it's moving fast. My suggestion is then that we, that our clerk, you know, fax, email, get it down to people in Columbus just as soon as possible. You know, obviously fax and email are instantaneous. Postage takes a good two days to get a letter from Shelby to Columbus, and we don't have two days.
Any further discussion on this? If not, I have a motion, second?
Move that the committee of the whole adjourn.
Second.
And the motion by Mr. Gates and a second by Mr. Martin to adjourn the committee of the whole, vote, vote, please.
Roll call.
Mr. Roberts?
Yeah.
Mr. Gates?
Yeah.
Mr. Martin?
Yeah.
Mr. McLaughlin?
Yeah.
Mr. Rock?
Yeah.
Okay, it's seven fifteen. Mr. Man, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McLaughlin, and thank you, John. Is there any other unfinished business that you brought before council to see? If not, oh, Mr. Martin?
I think that, I feel that we can probably take the exterior proper maintenance off of that West Main Street off. I think we, we know where it's headed. I saw there was a little bit of brickwork that was done on the building the other day. I'm confident where it's going. I don't know that we need to have a meeting update, perhaps it's something that can go into committee.
Mr. McLaughlin?
I support that, Mayor.
On the other hand, any other discussion? Okay. It's going the right direction. All righty. Any other unfinished business? If not, let's move forward to a longer list of legislation.
Ordinance number ten, 2021, amending chapter 1,476, projections into public ways and grounds, section 1,476.01, projections prohibited of the codified ordinances of the City of Shelby, Ohio.
Move for reading? Second. We have a motion by Mr. Roberts and a second by Mr. Martin for the third reading of ordinance number ten, 2021. Discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Roberts?
Yeah.
Mr. Gates?
Yeah.
Mr. Martin?
Yeah.
Mr. McLaughlin?
Yeah.
Mr. Rock?
Yeah.
Ordinance number ten, 2021, passes this third reading. We have a motion by Mr. Roberts and a second by Mr. Rock for the passage of ordinance number ten, 2021. Discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Roberts?
Yeah.
Mr. Gates?
Yeah.
Mr. Martin?
Yeah.
Mr. McLaughlin?
Yeah.
Mr. Rock?
Yeah.
Ordinance number ten, 2021, passes.
Order number eleven, 2021, amending chapter 1,500, electricity, section 1,050.02, rates and charges for service, B1, generation charge of the codified ordinances of the City of Shelby, Ohio.
Move the third reading? Second. We have a motion by Mr. Martin and a second by Mr. Roberts for the third reading of ordinance number eleven, 2021. Discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Roberts?
Yeah.
Mr. Gates?
Yeah.
Mr. Martin?
Yeah.
Mr. McLaughlin?
Yeah.
Mr. Rock?
Yeah.
Ordinance number eleven, 2021, passes this third reading. Move the ordinance to take note of pass. Second. We have a motion by Mr. Martin, a second by Mr. Roberts for the passage of ordinance number eleven, 2021. Discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Roberts?
Yeah.
Mr. Gates?
Yeah.
Mr. Martin?
Yeah.
Mr. McLaughlin?
Yeah.
Mr. Rock?
Yeah.
Ordinance number eleven, 2021, passes.
Order number twelve, 2021, amending ordinance number eight, 2021, annual appropriations and declaring emergency.
I move that the rule requiring that an ordinance be read on three separate occasions be suspended.
Second. We have a motion by Mr. Gates and a second by Mr. Martin that the rule requiring an ordinance be read on three separate occasions be suspended. Discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Roberts?
Yeah.
Mr. Gates?
Yeah.
Mr. Martin?
Yeah.
Mr. McLaughlin?
Yeah.
Mr. Rock?
Yeah.
The motion to suspend passes.
Move the ordinance to take note of pass.
Second. We have a motion by Mr. Gates and a second by Mr. Martin for the passage of ordinance number twelve, 2021. Discussion? Roll call, please.
Excuse me, I believe I need to find the instructor.
Mr. Wrennester, thank you.
I'll give you guys just a quick update on this. This is, some of them are sort of administrative. The maintenance equipment is increased due to ambulance repair, we didn't see coming along. The salt purchases, you know, we agreed to up our salt a little bit, and I could have adjusted it based on what you guys have allowed me, but I'm just worried that those funds kind of run tight anyway and it was a little bit unappropriated, so I figured I'd just increase up that way. I didn't borrow from Peter Pay Paul now and then run into an issue later. The bond payment and interest payment, that was, if you recall appropriations, the Justice Center bonds, you know, we refunded them last year, and the payments were rather low this year, which I thought was odd, and I discussed it with the new company, and they said, no, this is what we're charging. So now we have gotten a bill from the old company, apparently the, the bonds starting for twenty-two were refunded, so this incorporates the last payment for a portion of the bonds under the old law. So it's, it's fair, it's right. I was, I was rather surprised that they were telling me it was going to be so low this year. We still have all the same savings, it's just administrative oversight. I was talking to the wrong people. And then finally, the construction line item, the bottom one, that has to do with the resolution for the grant for the lead water line renewal, so that will be, we would get the grant revenue in order to expend these funds, so it's, it'll be a wash. And I will clear that for the, I'll let the county know on the income side of that as well.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Roberts?
Yeah.
Mr. Gates?
Yeah.
Mr. Martin?
Yeah.
Mr. McLaughlin?
Yeah.
Mr. Rock?
Yeah.
Ordinance number twelve, 2021, passes.
Order number thirteen, 2021, amending section 1,490.1 to yard area maintenance of chapter 1,490, external property maintenance of codified ordinances of the City of Shelby.
Move for first reading?
Second. We have a motion by Mr. Gates and a second by Mr. Martin for the first reading of ordinance number thirteen, 2021. Discussion? Mr. Martin?
Mayor, I, per the usual, I'm willing to give us the first reading, but I think there are some issues I would like to see addressed for a second reading. I appreciate the law director weighing in, a lot of those are the same thing that I was thinking of specifically in section three when it comes to what defines a front yard. Seems to be the space between the structure, free space between the structure and the, basically, the street. And I'm looking at, again, going off of memory here from those pictures, but looking at the original pictures, it seemed to be that some of those were right next to like the stoop or the front porch, and I'm wondering if even with this language in there, if what that, if that even rectifies that situation based off of my reading of the definition of what the front yard is. So I think there's, there's some situations there. I think that I, I support the spirit of this, what we're trying to accomplish, I just don't know that we have done it effectively with our writing to ensure the end state, and I think there are some questionable things in there that could catch some, basically make criminals of good actors, and I think that's the worst possible outcome that we could have, right? These people that are trying to do the right thing and we make them a violation. And so I think that this definitely, I definitely have some questions along those lines, but those are the main concerns that I have dealing with that. Thank you.
Mr. Rock? Mr. Rob.
This deals with, uh, basically an external property maintenance issue. I am moved to refer this to the Public Works and General Operations Committee.
I'll second that.
We have a motion by Mr. Rob and a second by Mr. Gates to refer ordinance number thirteen, two thousand twenty-one to the Public Works and General Operations Committee, discussion. Mr. Rob.
I would invite, uh, Mr. Gates to, uh, to attend those committee meetings and. Would appreciate his input, given he has time.
Mr. Gates.
Mr. Rob will remind me when they next meet. What would be the fourth Tuesday of the month? At three thirty.
Mr. Mayor.
I shall be in Maine at that point. I I might get dispensation from, uh, from someone to do that via Zoom. I can't, I can't promise that. One one might tick off my head if I was on vacation.
Just sneak off to that group.
Well, even the front yard.
Well, yeah, that would be our, uh, that would certainly be our intention to have the input of the author of the, uh, ordinance.
Surely.
We'll do our best.
I've written it in my book, at at three thirty, is that? Thank you.
Any further discussion? The motion to refer? Roll call please.
Mr. Roberts.
Yay.
Mr. Gates.
Yay.
Mr. Martin.
Yay.
Mr. McLaughlin.
Yay.
Mr. Rob.
Yay.
A motion to refer to the Public Works Operations Committee passes.
Resolution number twenty-two, two thousand twenty-one, authorizing the mayor as director of public service to submit a nomination form for principal forgiveness from the Division of Environmental and Financial Assistance, Office of Financial Assistance of the Ohio Environmental Protection Agency for replacement of lead service lines and declaring emergency.
Move the resolution be taken up, pass.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Martin and a second by Mr. Roberts for the passage of resolution number twenty-two, two thousand twenty-one, discussion. Mr. Um. Let's really compare the slabery on this.
Says, uh, the service department has identified forty-one lead service lines between the east side and west side squares, actually just just the outside of the squares. And knowing the fact that the Ohio EPA is offering a principal forgiveness, uh, loan or grant, uh, for the replacement of the lead service lines, it is a first come, first served, uh, nomination form. They are accepting the forms, uh, now. And what we're trying to do is stay ahead of the downtown inhibitor project, so assuming we can get the forms submitted to EPA and to review and hopefully be authorized to, uh, receive the, uh, the grant for this project.
Further discussion? I will say this, um, all the paperwork documentation for this is neat as a hen, so great job. Any further discussion? Roll call please.
Mr. Roberts.
Yay.
Mr. Gates.
Yay.
Mr. Martin.
Yay.
Mr. McLaughlin.
Yay.
Mr. Rob.
Yay.
Resolution twenty-two, two thousand twenty-one passes.
Resolution number twenty-three, two thousand twenty-one, declaring the amount of taxes that may be raised by a levy at the maximum rate optimized by law about a vote on electorates to be insufficient and declaring the necessity of a levy in excess of such rate for the general operation of Shelby Department of Health in accordance with Ohio Revised Code Sections five thousand seven hundred and five, point one nine, five seven oh five, point one nine one, five seven oh five, point two six.
Move the resolution be taken up, pass.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Martin and a second by Mr. McLaughlin for the passage of resolution number twenty-three, two thousand twenty-one, discussion. Roll call please.
Mr. Roberts.
Yay.
Mr. Gates.
Yay.
Mr. Martin.
Yay.
Mr. McLaughlin.
Yay.
Mr. Rob.
Yay.
Resolution number twenty-three, two thousand twenty-one passes.
Resolution number twenty-four, two thousand twenty-one, approving weed assessments as issued by the director of public service.
Move the resolution be taken up, pass.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Gates and a second by Mr. McLaughlin for the passage of resolution twenty-four, two thousand twenty-one, discussion. Mr. Gates.
Mayor, on the list, on the backside, I see two, uh, places where in-site investments limited is, uh, is made, is a property or built. At the end of the first one, um, there's, there's a blank there, and I'm wondering if that hundred and forty-four dollars is for both properties, just one property?
Yes, it is for for both properties. They had two partial numbers and and just one.
Mr. Gates.
Well, I'm I'm just wondering how the, uh, county office office might receive this, look at that, say there's a blank there.
That's a good question.
I don't know if one property is the front, one is the back, I.
Are they joined?
It's my understanding is that they're joined side to side, but I'm not one hundred percent positive on that.
Might might be better to split that hundred and forty-four dollars.
That makes sense.
Like, that's that's a technical correction, it doesn't change the intent of the billing. When we're assessing the total amount, you know, the parts have to equal the whole here, so I'll leave that to the good judgment of the clerk of council.
Heard you. Any further discussion? Roll call please.
Mr. Roberts.
Yay.
Mr. Gates.
Yay.
Mr. Martin.
Yay.
Mr. McLaughlin.
Yay.
Mr. Rob.
Yay.
Resolution number twenty-four, two thousand twenty-one passes.
Resolution number twenty-five, two thousand twenty-one, authorizing the mayor as director of public service to enter into an agreement between Community Improvement Corporation of Shelby, Ohio, CIC, for the Black Fork Commons Phase Two project and declaring emergency.
Move the resolution be taken up, pass.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Roberts and a second by Mr. Rob for the passage of resolution number twenty-five, two thousand twenty-one, discussion. Mr. Gates want to explain some of the process?
Yes, we worked with the law director to come up with this MOU based on CIC's money, our money that we're getting from the state budget, and being on part property. And this is the agreement I come up with, and, um, the CIC even had a legal look at it too, and they were happy with it, and so here we are.
Thank you. Any further discussion, Mr. Gates?
Just just to comment, paragraph three point four about the disclosure, will that, you know, that someone's water replaced, but with the public records, all it means next.
Any further discussion? Roll call please.
Mr. Roberts.
Yay.
Mr. Gates.
Yay.
Mr. Martin.
Yay.
Mr. McLaughlin.
Yay.
Mr. Rob.
Yay.
Resolution number twenty-five, two thousand twenty-one passes.
Resolution number twenty-six, two thousand twenty-one, authorizing the mayor as director of public service to enter into an agreement with the Edge Group, Inc., for engineering services and final design for the Black Fork Commons Phase Two project and declaring emergency.
Move the resolution be taken up, pass.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Roberts and a second by Mr. Rob for the passage of resolution twenty-six, two thousand twenty-one, discussion. Mr. Gates.
Um, we completed the RFQ processes outlined by the Ohio Revised Code, that process, and the Edge Group did rank the highest, um, so this is the contract negotiated. There were two other very good firms and so forth, um, but this is the firm that ranked the highest. They've contracted a local engineering firm out of Mansfield, who's done a lot of the, done all of the work for the downtown projects, and they were very familiar where everything's at, which I think will help a lot, so.
Thank you. Further discussion? Roll call please.
Mr. Roberts.
Yay.
Mr. Gates.
Yay.
Mr. Martin.
Yay.
Mr. McLaughlin.
Yay.
Mr. Rob.
Yay.
Resolution number twenty-six, two thousand twenty-one passes.
Resolution number twenty-seven, two thousand twenty-one, authorizing the mayor as director of public service to acquire title to a certain parcel of real estate owned by William D. and Esther M. Love of Shelby, Ohio, and declaring emergency.
Move the resolution be taken up, pass.
We have a motion by Mr. Martin and a second by Mr. McLaughlin for the passage of resolution number twenty-seven, two thousand twenty-one, discussion. Mr. Gates.
Mayor, I move the council go to executive session to consider the purchase of property for public purposes, the sale of property in competitive bidding, and the sale of other disposable indie and obsolete for unfit for use property in accordance with section, uh, the Ohio Code, premature disclosure of information will give an unfair advantage or barney advantage to a person's personal private interests as adverse to the general public interest.
Second. We have a motion by Mr. Gates and a second by Mr. Martin to go into executive session for the reasons so red, discussion. Mr. Uh, Gates.
Mayor, if this motion passes, I would request that you and, uh, Mr. Ensmann, the county council, and the executive session.
Any further discussion? Roll call please.
Mr. Roberts.
Yay.
Mr. Gates.
Yay.
Mr. Martin.
Yay.
Mr. McLaughlin.
Yay.
Mr. Rob.
Yay.
The motion passes, we go to the executive session at eight eleven.
I don't know what's on. Yeah, no, I know that, I'm not sure if there's anything else.
In other words. I'm going to start telling people they can. I'm going to start telling people they can.
All right. By past practice. Against my privacy, I'm allowed against one.
Yeah.
Got a kid who broke his arm today.
First reading, the second reading, I suppose that the rule requiring an ordinance be read on three separate occasions be suspended. I know those were first reading, second reading, and third reading, but what's the point?
What do you mean?
Motion. Okay, I feel I have a first reading, then I'll have a second reading, then I'll have a third reading. Well, this motion, ordinance number twelve dash twenty twenty-one, this is the amendment, the ordinance, this other ordinance, the motion that the rule requiring that ordinance be read on three separate occasions be suspended.
Correct.
Okay, so my question is, um, why do they read it three times? And if they're suspending that, does that mean this only can be read once, this only can be read twice? What does that mean?
So an ordinance is read three times so that there can be debate and discussion on the rule, things that may, and they may offer amendments. Has to pass three readings to pass, so they can discuss it three separate times if there is a specific reason that it can sit on. That's under normal business. If there is a time requirement that. Because once an ordinance is passed, it takes thirty days for it to take effect and become law. If I have to submit something by a certain date, and I cannot wait for that to pass and wait those thirty days, then council can hear something in an emergency, but they have to approve themselves, but they don't have to read them three occasions, they suspend that rule in order to make it pass.
So this is, um, a motion for this specific, um, ordinance?
Yes.
Not 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 a blanket?
No, just for that ordinance, that's what it's read, just for that ordinance. And that that all follows Robert's rules of order, which which is the procedural guideline that the council uses to have legislation.
Okay, that makes sense.
Back in the old days, in the eighteen hundreds, when I read through some of those meetings, they would actually have a council meeting. They would read it, because it says it's read it three times, they would read it once, read it again in the same meeting, and then read it three times in the same meeting and pass it one, one. The old school boys. Yeah. Hey, Joe, do they have any, I didn't catch, I didn't watch the, I didn't look at the schedule, did they have more legislation after this?
Nope.
So so what exactly is going on? That that's, anybody can try and modify.
How are you doing in there?
Yeah.
So there's five or six different reasons, like how we go into executive session, which is not a public meeting.
Well, I understand, I understand that, so, but.
This one, what is it, what was Garland's, they're going to talk about purchasing properties. And so they give a, this one's regarding purchasing property labeled off the whole.
Is that, is that, is that about from the front, the house to the street?
No, that's not.
No, this would be about about the city actually purchasing a property.
Oh, okay, got you there.
So, so, but it's. So in other words, the answer is none yet.
Yeah, you know, for real shit.
Body of that, you know, very short, like one sentence up there.
I mean, it makes sense, I mean, I I get it.
Yeah, so I'm on the legislative committee, and we just got this today, it's a presentation, I read through it all, it attaches a fifteen cent a month, um, emergency radio system to access to every mobile. And ten cents of that would go toward maintenance and help keep, you know, marks on. So what I'm thinking is, as they move toward this. They're requiring all agencies to do the marks, but I think this is their way of hard moving.
It's on our website. It's on our website.
I'm just, it's, that's what they're going to propose, is just everybody's tentative, if you want. Within five years of passage, if it could pass. We don't, I mean, I don't know, our financial forecast is.
Yeah.
So anyway, just.
With some of the planning, I I think we can.
I think so, too. I just thought it was funny in the lieu of the conversations we just had, that I got this today. I'll see you.
Thank you. So Garland gets all of that done in three days. But he gets all of that done in three days.
He does, he's.
He's a beast. Like, he gets that, he gets that on Friday, and he has all of this research done by Monday.
Yeah.
I don't know if I'm cut out for this. Like, I mean, does he do anything other than this?
Oh, yeah.
What?
Very bold and, uh.
Fish and fish. Sure, like he says it here sometimes, and stuff.
I mean, um, and, uh, but one of the risks that, uh, that's Martin.
Yeah.
Yeah, he he seems pretty long, too. Yeah. Yeah, this is, it's very impressive to see, you know, and you only have three days to to get this all done.
Yeah, and s- some of the legislation is, is, you know, like, if we're we're paying a grant or. having a grant, or when I have to change appropriations or something, you know, some of it's fairly straightforward, and so it might only take a fifteen, twenty minute read. Um, the other ones, you know, they'll put a lot of thought, research into.
Yeah, but it's also kind of, kind of hard, because you can, I, I see those flipping through papers, and it's like, if you look at this page, I'm like, I'm not looking at anything.
I'm trying to read all this stuff. You know, it's my job to flip this up all the same. Other times, sometimes.
Yeah.
It's, it's, it's something else. You get used to it. I'm saying, I, a year, a year and a half ago, I was completely.
This one, the executive session, is, uh, remember?
Right, yeah, yeah.
All right. City council, are you ready?
Yep, we're ready.
City council comes out to executive session at eight twenty. Any further discussion on, uh, resolution number twenty-seven, two thousand twenty-one? Roll call, please.
Mr. Roberts?
Yeah.
Mr. Gates?
Yeah.
Mr. Martin?
Yeah.
Mr. McGlocklin?
Yeah.
Mr. Rob?
Yeah.
Resolution number twenty-seven, two thousand twenty-one passes. In miscellaneous business, Mr. Gates?
Mayor, I want to share a story here, and, and quite a story will, will be obvious, I think. Um, back in the nineteen seventies, late seventies, the, uh, Northmore School Board decided to build a, a building at the high school. I'm not, I can't remember whether it was a bus garage or, or some storage building to, to build a building. And the Board of Education there, uh, one of their leaders voted to award a contract to someone to dig the footers. The vote on that motion was four to one. The one person objected, made it very clear, you know, the majority here is trying to split the contract to avoid competitive bidding. Well, at this subsequent meeting, there was a motion to award a contract to build, to lay the footers, or lay the foundation, rather. Vote was four to one, and that continued throughout the construction of this building. Eventually, this matter made its way to the Mortal Comedy Common Pleas Court, and four members of the Board of Education were removed from office from misfeasance, malfeasance, and nonfeasance in office. Now, my colleagues are wondering, how does Gatesy know about what happened at the Northmore School Board in the nineteen seventies? Well, I know that because my cousin, Mary Lee Augustine, was on the Board of Education, and she was one of the four people removed because they had split the contract to avoid competitive bidding. I raise this quite, I raise, tell this story, because I understand there is some, uh, possibility that the city may purchase a dump truck in pieces and parts rather than as a whole. And I would suggest, you know, if that's being done to avoid competitive bidding, I would suggest that he who writes the requisition, he who certifies the availability of funds, and he who approves the purchase order, I suggest that they would benefit by the unfortunate example of the Mar, of the Northmore Board of Education.
Thank you. Uh, may I mention, just before we dismiss, uh, that, uh, adjourn, uh, May sixth is the National Day of Prayer, and we will have a local, uh, time of prayer in amphitheaters, seven o'clock PM on May the sixth, so, uh, let's all be in prayer for, uh, our nation, leadership of our nation. We all could use it. Mr. Gates?
Mayor, I'm with council adjourn.
Second. We have a motion by Mr. Gates and a second by Mr. Martin for adjournment. Roll call, please.
Mr. Roberts?
Yeah.
Mr. Gates?
Yeah.
Mr. Martin?
Yeah.
Mr. McGlocklin?
Yeah.
Mr. Rob?
Yeah.
Motion passes. We adjourn at eight twenty-four. Thank you.